No, we just, we gotta keep a good pace.
Yeah, no, no, no.
So that's good start. Call a meeting to order. Rios and Johnson are excused. And then we'll step to the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public comment and input.
Are you sure, sir, you don't want to speak?
Sorry, I was.
All right. How did that go along? Item three, consent the agenda and the minutes of meeting nine nine twenty twenty one. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to consent the agenda and approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Sure.
First by trustee Root, and second by trustee Black. Any discussion? All right, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it so fast. All right, then sheriffs report.
Good evening, thanks for having me. Month of September twenty twenty one, deputies spent more than four hours in the village throughout the month. Deputies conducted thirty-nine crime preventions in the village. They also addressed one rescue run, one theft from a vehicle, one unwanted party, and they conducted several traffic stops issuing the following citations. Seven for speeding, one for operating without a license, three for operating while suspended, five for operating vehicle without any insurance, and one stop sign violation. Two parking citations were also issued. They contain, deputies continue to maintain an active presence in the village daily between the crime preventions and just area patrols. So that not only when we have assigned deputies, as well as area cars continue to drive through the area and whatnot, just make sure, ensure that our businesses are secure after hours, obviously conducting traffic at our main points down over here, and then just trying to do some community policing, driving around. So in September, we have four billable hours in the village for a total of two thirty-eight twenty-four. That's submitted respectfully by the tenant electorate. I do have the breakdown of calls for service and then just showing the amount of time and whatnot, if you'd like to review that at all and see times of days, et cetera, through here.
You guys knew there was like five cars that were broken into the other night.
What's that?
Five cars that were not broken into, I won't say that.
Entered.
Entered, entered because they were unlocked.
Yeah, there was a, there was.
I think five, at least five, because Ernie's sister and sister, our house, and three other families that I know.
Yeah, that's mother.
We got an Aldi quarter stolen from us for the shopping cart that's all the same from us, but I know Ernie's brother-in-law was, there was a lot.
Yeah, they did.
So we, I think my husband called, I asked him to call, but I, we think it happened about twelve-thirty at night.
Yeah, there was surveillance video, I don't know, one in the rain door, about cameras, I think at eleven-thirty at night. And then there was another, I forget what the address was, but he didn't have security footage, but his truck was gone through, so there is a description on that, and I know that's been turned over to our investigations, we are to follow up and try and obtain other video footage and whatnot.
Okay, great.
Yeah, one of mine locked too, at least one of mine.
Yeah, so there was, it was all within, it was all the same night, and it was, I mean, I'm up late, I'm always up late because I don't go to bed at all, and that was just one thing, I wanted to make sure, that's why I told my husband, I'm like, you need a car.
No, and I guess, I think that is frustrating, I mean, eighteen years of doing this for me is, is, you know, at times you hear like, oh, you know, my car was gone through, and they just took some quarters, well, did you call us? Well, no, we didn't want to bother you.
Right.
That's our job, to be here and document that and figure out trends and whatnot, because is somebody within the community, somebody coming through, does it turn into a spotty thing, which I know we've all heard at times, different areas getting hit on different nights, so it is very important, and I absolutely agree with you.
Awesome, so let's just keep, Chris, let's just keep putting out on Facebook every now and again, like, make sure your cars are locked, because I feel that, I mean, I even had to think, was my van locked? Because I have three children and my car was a mess because of my three children.
And they probably looked inside, they're like, yeah.
Jonas was like, was my, were my tennis shoes stolen? I'm like, no, nobody wants their tennis shoes, buddy.
And I don't know if you're aware of our strategic control unit at all, so if we identify trends, we can assign those cars and adjust their hours to come out during certain timeframe. So if Elmwood Park is having issues between ten at night and three in the morning, we will adjust their hours because they're in a super flex schedule.
That's great.
And we can say, hey, Elmwood Park's having issues, so we can assign three cars on here, four cars on here between those timeframes, and just start doing stops and seeing what's moving around and what doesn't belong, and essentially our job for that.
Excellent, thank you.
And then there's also resources like the investigation group we have too, where they can pinpoint phones and do a bunch of different pretty neat searches and stuff, so if we're more articulate who we think it is, so.
I have a comment, it seems to be happening more on the east end of the village, over on the sun, and wondering if people are coming in off the bike path, and if there's any type of surveillance or patrolling of that bike path back there, because to me, it just seems that's a very easy access and they can get in and out pretty much without being seen, because there's so many areas that can get onto the bike path.
That's a, that's a very good point, because one of the families that lost some tools, they're pretty sure they were on their deck, and they live right on the bike path, on the Matt stride, and they had a ring doorbell, but I don't know if they caught anything on the front end, but they said that there was definitely thing like footprints, or I don't even know how they would find footprints, but they, Rachel knew that they were on the deck, so they might have a ring doorbell on the back deck too.
In the morning dew, or somebody walking through vegetation.
But she knew what time it was, which makes me think that they, that they knew it was happening, so.
So what you're saying is there are more incidents than just that one night?
No, this was all in the same night, that was all in the same night, because that's how I found out that our car was gone through, because Rachel contacted me, and then Charles checked and was like, yep, my car was gone through.
I just found the fact that we have so much visibility that weekend, because we have two days.
Right, but it was a Thursday. It was the, it was the Thursday after the car show.
Right.
So, I don't know, that's interesting.
They're, they're, they're.
I won't tell.
No, and I absolutely agree with you, and I think there's a few, I know some of the patrols, the squads can go drive on the bike path at nighttime, if we have articulated suspicion of how somebody's entering or leaving, that would be identified and we give a little bit more attention to that too, but I think that's absolutely a concern, because that is an easy access to bad carries to see what's going on. So on your Facebook page, I would highly encourage truly any little thing that doesn't look right, please call us, because as we all know, people are out scouting, and if all of a sudden they see somebody's paying attention and calling a squad right away, we have a deterrent.
Can I ask one other question?
Yes, ma'am.
We walked late at night, and there was a fire pit burning in the driveway, probably two feet from a car, like a fire, like not a fire pit, but you know, like, yes. And we just thought it was a little bit, Charles, my husband mentioned, he's like, that's, that's really close to the car, that really could start something on fire. We did not call, but is that something like, should we call? I don't know, I just, it was a very large fire right next to a car. I just felt like it was not the best judgment, and it was about nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, I, as far as I'm concerned though, with the village ordinance, we'd, it more stipulates distance from a building, but if you see anything that's unsafe and it doesn't make sense, we're more than happy to come out and check that out, because if the car starts on fire, then starts the garage on fire, that's ten feet from the neighborhood.
The car was in the driveway, it was just, and it was all in the driveway, but it was just, I mean, literally, the fire pit's here, the fire was right there, and I was like, why would you ever, okay. Ernie, I'll stop talking and.
No, I know it does not anything to it.
I just thought it was, it was one of those things that I would think our neighbors would have a little bit of a better sense, and if anybody's watching, you have a better sense of like, when you're burning, whatever you're burning, you can't be that close to an establishment or a car.
Yeah, I imagine probably a beverage was involved in that decision-making process to.
You're probably right.
No, truly, there's something, you don't think it's safe, call us.
Okay. We've done that before for a suspicious car that came through, that is, that drove through the neighborhood a couple times, because we, we don't walk until about eight at night when it starts getting dark, and if it's cars we don't recognize and they just keep making rounds, we usually call in at the non-emergency line, so.
I wish more people would do that, or would do.
We do.
You know, it seems, because Charles is a big dude, I mean, if people had gone by the house and he'd go up and talk to them and said, you know, sorry, do you realize how close this is to your vehicle?
Yeah.
Or maybe that would be another.
Uh, did I, yeah. So, okay, thank you.
What I can show here for your review real quick is just our cat room. So this front page is just what I have read too, this is just a summary of different calls for service on the back, but then this is what I was looking for you guys to just take a quick look at, you can just kind of see how stuff's documented. Have you looked, seen this before and how to read it?
I would email.
Okay.
We actually were just emailing that today, so I can send that.
Okay.
That's great, that's awesome.
Does anyone need to see it now or have questions?
No, I think that, thank you.
Thank you.
We always appreciate your service.
No, we appreciate you guys' support, and truly, I just, I just can't stress enough, those low quality life issues, how they can be a big deterrent, so. I appreciate it, I'll bring up some of those concerns and make sure that third shift even more is maybe where it may hit the bike path more.
There was just, there was something that happened probably about a month ago that I called, because it was a car that came to the village. Usually people say hello, this car drove by us, went back around, parked, and sat there. We went around, then we went the longer way so we could actually get the license plate number, because then they finally went inside, but we did not recognize anyone, and it was just a little bit, it seemed too odd to just be sitting there and they were stalling and waiting for someone, and I feel like we're pretty secluded, that at night I worry about all sorts of things. You know, is there drugs going on, is that, you know, is there something going on, you know, so we did do, we walked actually around three times just to finally figure out who it was and what was going on, and we, we got the tags and called and just said this was a suspicious car, but it was like eight-thirty at night, and.
Do you know who that was? Because I can look and call for you and you should.
I do not know what the date was, but I know it was probably at the end of September.
And thank you for, I noticed there were a lot more traffic citations and incidents, I really appreciate that, because I know in the past, we have, as a board, we've asked for additional surveillance on the traffic, because so many of them go so fast, and so I noticed that there were a lot of, so I know, yeah, citations, and it's amazing how many people drive without a license, without insurance, after revocation, it's just like, oh my gosh, yeah, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, just before I got voted on, I was out here quite a bit, and truly, I just, eighteen over, twenty-five over, residential area, oh, late, okay.
Wait till somebody gets, some little kid gets hit, which would be terrible.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your time, I'll try and take a look, see what I can find out.
Yeah, they didn't, I said I, it could have been nothing, but it was just too, it was too weird, and there were like three cars, and then there was one car that kept circling, and it was just, it was, it was, yeah, it was just not right. My, mine has been a green, it was like, there's something going on there that I don't.
That, does it sound as simple as kids trying to find a buddy's house for a party, or?
Well, we, we basically, like, people were like, do you need help? But this car, they did not look at us, they would not talk to us, and I thought that was a little, and they were adults, so it wasn't a kid.
Okay.
So it was, it, yeah, that just made us a little bit nervous.
Perfect, we'll take a look now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Stay safe.
All right, moving on then, president's report. So I would like to start with a congratulations to the events committee on the car show. I thought it was great, I know that it was a few parts less than two years prior, but having accomplished that through COVID, that's still pretty impressive to me.
Woo-hoo! Thank God for Ken.
Yes, the judging tool I thought was better this year.
Yes, the judging was amazing, Ernie. You pulled, I had to hurry Ernie along.
Yeah, that was, you, you think that it wouldn't take so long, but it does, so thank you.
I know, you were awesome, Ernie.
Everyone involved in the car show, to be honest.
We will be happy to meet a while, get to that when we do the reports.
Next item, then, building five, the new tenant is expected to occupy the building on the first of November, so Chris was telling me that they've already paid their security deposit, so that seems like it's a non-set in motion. Nice people, we looked at the, we stopped, actually stopped and looked at the other businesses that they're running right now, which is the same thing over here, move from where they're at to this, and all in all, good experience, good conversation, it's heading in the right direction, best thing I can say about it. The next item then, two B, actually, I'd like to talk about that real quick, we did have a tenant lined up for building two B, she was going in for a surgery, which I don't know if that's to reality a little bit right now, but we haven't been back to her recently, so we'll reach out to her again, but I'd imagine that her, she had a pretty major surgery, so I'd imagine that that's put a wrench in her plans. Originally, she was supposed to be November first, so we'll see what's happening with that. Street lights, RIC has confirmed that they're gonna start next Monday, and it was a two to three day duration that they're thinking, so obviously, the weather right now is very unpredictable, so that may slow them down, and there will be some small areas of restoration, they're gonna bore it, so I don't know if anyone's seen those boring machines, get the lung pipes on them, that, that's how they're gonna do the majority of the work, so that we don't have open trenches again, after we just got done with having open trenches. So after that, then the light should be back on, I know a lot of people have been asking about the lights, so it's been a long investigatory process and now.
That's good, I wonder if that'll deter from this burglar race.
I, I don't think so, because our lights are not actually designed for lighting, they're ornamental.
But it is dark, when we walk, it is dark, I mean, we bring a flashlight, it is dark on East Elmwood Drive.
Well, I just look at like some of the other areas that have full street lighting that are in Racine that are right across the way, everyone's watching them ring and things like that.
Right.
It's, it just seems that there's an uptick in the area, so I hate to say it, but it almost seemed like an inevitability, so luckily, there was nothing broke, and that would have been much more concerning to me if people were actually breaking things then.
Right, right.
So right now, was a prime of opportunity, it seems like, and we all learned a lot from it.
And we have not had any, I just read on Mount Pleasant, or maybe in the paper, that they're having people pose as like me, energies workers, we have not had any of that.
Oh, yeah, that happened in Mount Pleasant.
Nothing, none of that has happened yet, right? Okay.
Actually, what, the shame about items like that is that most of that goes unreported because the elderly feel embarrassed. That actually happened to my uncle eight years ago, oh, ten years ago at this point, before he passed, and he, well, obviously, but he, they did a, like a window scam on, it was all from telephone, and he didn't tell anyone until years after, so that's another.
No, these people are showing up at their house, like, you have to come in the backyard, and then they're going in their house.
There's all, yeah, there's all sorts of things like that, it's a shame.
Too bad for the elderly, they're still the biggest target, just keep an eye on them. Ernie, I have a question with the lighting, how did that all work out as far as who's taking care of what, as far as?
So we worked on a deal with, it's an interesting deal, and we still have to meet with DK to finalize it, so DK did a ton of extra work, a lot of that at my request, because just there are as ands that weren't really, that don't need to draw in well, and they had one heck of a PM working on it, and that guy was extremely accommodating, so I felt like we were shorting them, so we're going to pay them a little bit extra for the extra work they did, which I still feel they're getting shortened on, and they are gonna take a portion and then apply that to the lights, so it's squaring up with them, and then applying some of that then back to the lights, so I feel that that's a fair way of going about it, especially since they did, they didn't want to have a good job, and I don't want them to feel that they're being shorted and then maybe punished, you know, after they did such a good job.
Right, okay, good.
So, and, and in their defense, it is a bad situation to start with, in that the lights are buried, the, the power is buried at the bottom of the old trench.
You told me this.
It's just, it was a bad idea from the start, so. We had talked about redoing the lights, the light pathing throughout the village, that didn't meet the budget first time around, nobody knew realized it could stay as much as we did, but now, as we move forward, we can bore these in areas that, you know, we can stay five feet off the trench, which is what we're doing now.
So the, the light, the cords will not go, or the power lines?
They'll be nowhere near the trench, so in the future, this should be a lot easier.
Awesome.
Hopefully, this doesn't have to be done before a year's around. Next item, spring road work, and this follows up with the ponding that some people are having, so you, you were sent some pictures, I've talked to quite a few residents that have had what they're calling ponding issues, which aren't necessarily ponding issues, so the problem that we corrected before specifically on East Elmwood and a little bit of South Elmwood, the road was actually acting as the collector for the water, so the water would go on the road, and that's how it would get to the collection systems. You want water off the road, so now, a lot of these areas where people are seeing water getting off the road, if there's a pitch, water is going to follow that pitch, if your driveway's in the way, it's, it's going over the driveway until the water gets absorbed through the storm system. So I think a few people are just, they didn't have it before, now they have that, and understandably, they're unhappy. I keep using the example of my driveway, because my driveway is actually back pitched for the first five feet, there's a storm inlet ten feet from the end of my driveway, and I'll get three to four inches of water. In the winter, I'll get standing water there, and then I'll have to salt it and whatnot. Mine is a, mine is a counterpoint to what they're seeing and seeing as normal, it's not, not everyone should expect that, but I'm just making the point that when water gets to a low spot, it's, it's going to stay there until it drains, and that's what happens with mine, so as soon as everything in the adjacent area is lower, it drains out. There is, now, having said that, there are a few that I do feel need to be corrected. We're gonna look at that as, as a spring work, there's some additional correction that needs to happen to some of the asphalt flumes, John Willie actually sent a message out about that, so there was some correction done in the short term, because some of the flumes, there's rolled curves on some of the back of the flumes that didn't actually work out like the designer wanted, so DK, again, not DK, excuse me, this was Stark, I feel that the entire team went above and beyond, so Stark then directed the landscaper to cut slots in the back of the flume, so water wasn't ponding out behind the flume. So again, this is all work that has to be done in the spring, we're not gonna try and get anything else this year, it's time to just let it be for now, and then again, the spring, we'll do more correction, get the thing rounded out. We saved a lot of money on the budget, so we've got plenty of money to make these minor corrections.
Will you contact the family that I talked to about, the one of you?
The one, one of them I actually talked to, and.
Greg Tallick?
The one who's, he's East Elmwood's south side, we talked to him, because he had concerns when that was first done, so his is kind of a gray area for me, because it happens when there's a heavy rain, and then it pitches off the driveway.
Right.
I'm gonna look at it again, at it again, he is, he said he was getting his driveway redone, so if he raises his up a little bit at the end, where we're butts in the street.
Is that the same, are we talking about the same grandson or you don't know?
I think.
Greg Tallick, his wife was Greg and Gail, they live very close to me, so like.
No, this is different.
Okay. Because I, I think that it would be great to hear from somebody about, this is our, our thoughts. I do think their water does drain, but it takes like three to four hours, and I think their biggest concern is ice in the winter.
Yeah, that, to be honest, I, I call it pretty much normal, because again, now that we've got Crown, which that road had, it was flat.
Right.
So now all the water is going, instead of maybe going down the road, which you saw that there was a swell on the, on the west, or on the south side of the east, the east pitch of the road, so the water goes to the south side of the road and it goes down.
Right.
Now it's going completely off of the road, both sides, so they're getting water on their side that they never saw before, it just, that's, it takes time to drain, that's why, I think there's gonna be a learning curve to this for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Because now we, we've accomplished a goal of getting water off the road, but without having swells, the waters, it's gonna take some time to drain.
So yes, I sent Ernie both those addresses, so if he wants to explain everything what he just said.
Yeah, it might be a nice to just reach out to them.
Yeah, I can do that. I'm gonna make a clip of this.
Yes, I know, just, I think that, that would be, I think that's, that's, I think that's smart, I think that just some sort of, you know what's going on, we'd love to, you know, we just want to make sure, because they, they did come, I took the pictures, they didn't take the pictures.
Well, I, I just want to look at it and see if, if there's something that can be improved with, with the work that was done.
Gail also did mention that that was not the worst it had been, it actually has been worse than that, but like I said, I mean, she brought the, Greg brought it up to me a while before, and then Charles and I walk at night, so there had been rain, and we, we went and looked, and we're like, there's not a puddle, so I do think it, it settles after, but it takes a few hours, and I think they're just older, they're worried about ice at the end of their driveway, they don't want to fall, Greg just had his knee or his hip replaced, like, they're just things that they worry about, that, that I, I think they have some concerns, and they just want to make sure that like, do, what, what do we do here? There is also, and this is a question I have, okay, you've got the drain, and then you've got like this, I took a picture of it, it's like right in front of their house, there's a, like, it's not a drain, it's just an airflow or something, maybe, do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
Okay, wait, I'm gonna load it. It's, Kat, here.
That's an inlet, that's a drain.
Okay, that's a drain, and then there's another drain right near it.
Because, yeah, I know what you're talking about, the reason is, is because the system dead-ends like ten feet from where that last inlet is, so the inlet that's, that's further to the south is the one that's actually intended to collect the water, when the system ends, you either have to put a cleanup, you, you, so you have to put a cap on it so that you can access it, so at that point, instead of just putting a cap on it, why not just put another inlet?
Okay.
Because it has to be something so that you can access it.
Because she wasn't sure, Gail wasn't sure, and I was like, there's a drain here, and there's a drain here, and then they've got this thing kind of not in their front area, but off to the side.
Mm-hmm, no, we threw in more than we thought.
She was gonna ask, and I was like, I, I'm not.
That, that one was intentional, it looks, it looks a little funny, but that's intentional.
I teach kids about commas and punctuation and capital letters. Oh, you're back.
Got your answers.
Yes.
August twenty-third, about eight-thirty at night.
That might have been right, because I'm, I'm a teacher, and, yeah, it was a while ago.
Yeah, so the, the car came back to a female out of Nina, Wisconsin, and no driver record, no warrants or anything weird about that, the deputy spent about twenty-one minutes driving around, and he made an extra attention for the timeframes in that area.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks for checking.
Great.
Absolutely.
It was just one of those things, like, didn't seem quite right.
She got really lost, landed up in her car.
Yeah.
From Nina.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Drive safe.
All right, well, there's it for the ponding, and we really need to pick up the pace.
Yes, let's go.
Okay, so that's it for the, for member report. Rios is excused, trustee Black. Trustee Gasser.
Car show went great, we have not had our final, we're gonna have a final meeting, I'm hoping maybe next Tuesday, Chris, I've gotta talk to Jen and Ken and, and Dennis to see if that works, but overall, I thought it was a really good event over COVID, and Jen and I will start working on doing something for the holidays, and if Pat wants to join us.
Absolutely.
That would be great, so.
And good weather.
And good weather for the car, it was great weather, and I will say, because Jen is not here, I think the Racine here, the.
Preservation.
Yes, preservation Racine event, as you said, was fantastic, there were lots and lots of people here, and I think that was great for the village, so yay.
All right, thank you, trustee Hinkle.
Thank you.
All right, Johnson is excused, trustee Root.
Just working with Chris to finalize budget items, and that's it, thank you.
Administrator Jenkins, brief, brief.
I'll keep it brief, because you're gonna hear it from me a lot over there. Budget stuff we're gonna go over, you know about the contracts that we were renewing in just a little bit, we've already talked about road stuff, and I just wanted to thank trustee Gasser with my value, I only do it when it's meaningful and there's a reason, and Ally and I had, you know, a lot of good talks and stressful talks in the past month or two, so, you know, just that kind of how beautiful it all kind of came together, it just felt good.
Yeah, and Ken Hinkle's name should totally be out there.
Okay.
He was, definitely kept it real insane for me, and even Lou and Ernie, both are awesome helping, thanks so very much.
As a chair, I would like to present you with this award, for serving as a village trustee and chair of the events committee, you continue to support networking within support networking within the community and using resources to vote, to bring both visitors and residents into the village, supporting that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ally. Keep it up. And with that, I'll prep my report right there.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Okay, presentations. The 2022 presentation. Chris, please.
Have two budget documents in front of you. One is the presentation that we're going to be going through tonight. And then the other one is the budget book. So the budget book, we're not going through tonight, but that is the full budget with all supplemental material for you to review between now and November's meeting and then in November is when we'll do a final approval.
And there's a quiz?
There's not a big quiz, there's a lot of stuff in there.
You know, I've gone through it and I really would recommend that it's got the trustees.
Oh, yeah.
It's very comprehensive and Chris put a lot of work into it and I think you have to be really knowledgeable about making the vote come November.
Yeah, this looks great, Chris. Good job.
Thank you. Well, let's talk about it. So I like to joke because I've been keeping track. Two years ago, when I first did a budget presentation, this room was actually more packed and we were in the middle of a snowstorm. The year after that, we had a couple of people trickle down and we had a rainstorm. Today, the weather's beautiful and nobody's here. Oh, well. But I'm here to present the
But yeah, they're watching it from here.
Yes, they're watching it at home. Thanks for joining us. We represent the Village Elmwood Park 2022 Budget Presentation. There we go. Our organizational chart has not changed, neither has our mission and values. So let's talk about some challenges. We had some challenges this year with less funding coming from interest and fines. But overall, our income streams came in pretty well, which was great to see. Street management, as we talked about earlier, we know about that and there'll be a little bit of cost associated with that. We had some hall cancellations thanks to the wonderful pandemic. And then we have continual repair items that came up through the complex and BB that continue to push the line items in our budget. But accomplishments wise, building permits were great. They're successful, skyrocketed more and more and more. Setting a hall of gym rentals. So as I said in my report, I'd like to thank our new hall sales rep, Kendall Barrier. She's doing a great job and I'm sure she can keep up the work. We completed the big road and stormwater project. I mean, when you think about everything that we did, not only the cost of the budget with the volume of the work and everything that happened this year, and you think about the size of our village, that's a huge accomplishment. That one third of our village got completely new roads and stormwater system. That's pretty cool and that's something we should be very proud of. We negotiated new contracts for health, our health department, fire, EMS and waste pickup. We got new tenants for building two A, four A and five and hopefully two B as well, which definitely helped our budget. Increased communication through all the various means. Completed a village-wide reassessment, which does a huge help with our tax rate, which I'll get to a little bit later. And then we, I formatted line items in QuickBooks and formatting in the budget, which you will see in the review. So let's get into it. So this is all for next year. We're looking at the income streams. So first, your property taxes are made up of two pools of money. You have the general levy. This is the amount that the state says we are allowed to collect in taxes from our residents. And then you have debt levies. So your principal interest payments on your debt get added on as well. And then that equals the total amount that you're collecting from the taxpayers. So it's going up from $255,000 to $287,000, about a 30% increase. And that's mainly due to debt obligation payments that we'll be talking about a little bit later. I will note that we did have a special assessment for one property and we had to clear, it's a long story, but they're going to be specially assessed that amount. And so in total, we'll have collected $292,600, which is overall 13% in income from taxes. So when you take that amount of money that we're collecting in taxes and then you divide it by the assessed value of the village, that's how you get your tax rate or your mill rate. So the mill rate, despite us taking in more money, is going down. So it's going down to 6%. Your rate last year was about 6.4, 6.5 to your tax rate. If anybody asks you and says, whoa, my taxes going up, your tax rate is going down 0.4%, okay? So that's important to note. And so if anybody's taxes maybe did go up, well, a lot of things can affect that and mostly is values, right? So if the value of your home increased, then you're going to pay more taxes. The value of your home went down and decreased, you're going to pay less taxes. But again, I just, the important thing to note is that, yes, we're going to be talking about a lot of things today and spending a lot of money and even debt conversation later today. Even with that, your tax rate is going down.
By 4%.
By 0.4%.
0.4%. I thought, I would say, did I miss the points there?
So, and just so you know what that means, that mill rate, it means that for every $1,000 of value, we're collecting $6.
Got it.
That's what that six means. If it was 6.4, then we're collecting $6.40. Any other questions on this? Because it's probably the most important thing we're talking about.
Not when people come to see me, I'm just going to take them, you know?
All right. So intergovernmental revenues, these are revenues that we collect from other governments, mostly the state. Typically, there are various grants, so like your recycling grants I apply for every year, fire dues is a grant as well. I know there's some things that the state just gives us to be nice and offset the property tax levy. You can see that has changed a lot, 0%. So we're still aiming to get the exact amount that we got this year. License and permits, this is where you see a change. This year went really well, really good. I mean, it's a combination of COVID, people were stuck at home, right? People had money to spend. But it's also a combination of enforcement. I mean, not only you guys, but our village populace and even our inspectors themselves just did more driving around and said, hey, did this guy get a permit? And then they called me and I investigate and then we normally smack on permit. So if we continue those efforts, and I'm assuming the market doesn't completely tumble, then we should have at least a decent increase in building permits. Just so you know, these numbers are too far fetched. Our current numbers for the six months shows that we hit the 2,000 goal at six months. We're at about 4,000 right now with building permits. So I think 3,000 is kind of mid-range and applicable. Doc license fees, not much change there. Letting the permit go down a little bit. And the franchise cable fees is about the same as well as plumbing permits. You don't get too much plumbing permits, so it's a little purpose. All right, so this is where it gets exciting. So this is rental income. All the buildings are bringing in revenue. I've been here for what, four years now? This is the first time that I can say that and literally every building is bringing in revenue. So when we look at the expense side, we talk about all the things that we're going to be spending money on, we can do that not by raising the people's taxes, but because you collect money through the complex, BB school and the cell tariff that you rent. So that's pretty cool. It's a pretty, pretty unique thing and it's something that when I go to conventions, I like bragging about type of business partners because it's just really neat and you don't see that too often. So this includes standard increases for all tenants, the new tenants and their contracted rates. But overall, it's a 31% increase in revenues, which brings you about $50,000 boost, which is super exciting to see.
I think that's important to know because I've talked to different people and they say, oh, the complex and BB, they're just these big money pits and they just drain all the money and why do we have to pay for all that? And it's just like, no, they're bringing in money. So if you talk to them, let them know that the complex and BB do bring in a lot of money for us.
In 30 seconds, can you tell me, did you say who was renting building five?
It's a daycare.
It's a different daycare?
Different daycare.
Awesome.
Actually, one of the employees there at the former building five is now one of the people renting it.
That's awesome. And it's working out well?
So, well, they have denied it yet.
They literally just signed.
But they're just signing, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so this is just the synopsis of the income side. So again, 41% of your income is based off of your rent. If you didn't have this, I don't know what you would do.
Raise taxes.
Raise taxes, I guess. All right, so that's what the expenses. So first, this is the debt obligations. So this includes your, on your, it's the third, there's three years left on the complex debt. There's 13 years left on road debt for phase one that we just borrowed for last year. And then this would include the first year of debt obligations for the Windows project, which we'll be talking about a little bit. So all that is funded through here. So yeah, there's a 28% increase, but that's adding in the new debt that we'll be discussing a little bit later. General government expenditures, there's not too much. We added bookkeeping in here. So previously, whenever we would do the audit, they would charge us for the audit, but then not, not line item out their costs for actually doing the bookkeeping and correcting things when I'm at the top. So we have an accounting for that, so that's why you see that bump. It doesn't mean that their services are changing, we're just now counting for that cost and it knows coming. Elections, we have four elections next year, so that's why you see the bump and that. So that pays for the training and all the election workers and you know, maybe a little treat here or there for them. The events have remained stable, print locations remain stable, property insurance remaining stable. We do special assessments. This is different than a reassessment. Special assessment is again, when we have to go and do something for a property. So if somebody refuses to cut down a tree or mow their lawn and we have to hire somebody to do that, we have to pay for it and then we recoup those costs the next year. We didn't have a line item for this, now we get. And then finally, the village reassessment, we did that this year. There's no, there's not a need to do a reassessment, so there's savings from that. Any questions on that?
It looks like the tree share, we only use $50, right?
We use 150 this year.
And that's it?
So it goes back to 500 every year.
Okay, great.
So maintenance expenses. So this throws in a couple of our capital improvement stuff that we've been talking about. So we did two furnaces this year. We're going to be doing two more furnaces next year. It includes the AC repair we talked about at the last meeting, planning on doing that in spring. And then there's a new light item for complex lights. So this is another one of those things that we're just kind of paying out of any other account. We should have separate lighting for lights and that's what we have. I bumped up the cost for BB just because history has told us that we keep having to spend money in that thing. So I'd rather be safe than sorry and throw a little bit down there. Payroll. So we're going to be talking about new wages for both the board trustees and our maintenance staff a little bit later. This incorporates that. The main thing to note is on the maintenance side, we're looking at hiring one new person and establishing a succession plan. We love our employees, right? We love Kurt, but we need to be realistic that we have an aging population and we'd like to develop some sort of succession plan so that, you know, we can have a constantly evolving workforce. And we also need to acknowledge, and I'll touch on this when we get to the pay, that in this market, we just need to pay more, otherwise we might not be able to hire anyone. So we'll touch on that a little bit later. Complex expenditures, so these are utilities. Most of the utilities are just adjusted to cover actuals based on previous year. And then not only new real line item is building two. So last year, we didn't budget paying for building two utilities because at the time we had a burden of hand that was to pay for those utilities. Now we do have a renter doing half of them and yes, they do recoup us for those utilities, but we still have to pay for them first. So on the income side, they're paying us back, we have to expense for it first on this side, so we see that. But other than that, it's pretty much remain usual, pretty usual. Public safety side, animal control went up. Again, every year, they send us a new contract and this amount is determined based on the number of animals that they had to deal with the previous year. I guess they took a lot of animals from Elmwood Park and that's why it went up to 450.
Do we have a report on that? That's insane. That seems like a lot.
It's not, but the previous year, I mean, you could see it went down from 360 to 60, just like that. So they literally must have collected only a couple of dogs and then went up back up to a lot. I could ask for a more detailed report. I mean, yes, it's a lot, but
Who charges that?
Well, actually, when we first looked into this, because they were charging us a lot in 2019, that was the first time we actually looked into it and it dropped significantly that year because we found out they were taking in no dogs. So it was higher than that in what the 2020 was.
Okay. Because I, I mean, we've gotten a dog in our backyard, seriously, or in our house, actually, rented it for our owners in the house. It happened to be neighbor. I didn't know whose dog it was. But, but the Humane Society charges you if we bring a dog that shows up in our backyard?
Yeah, that's where they pick it up. Yeah.
What if we bring the dog to them?
They charge them.
I just wondered because we did have, we had a dog that we ended up finding on our own, like we figured out whose dog it was and it was somebody that was living like over by Piggly Wiggly. And you know, you've got lost dogs in Wisconsin and we're dog people. I just did not know that if you bring a dog in, that they charge. I want to say, I want to send out a Facebook message like, if you get any dogs, just bring them out. The journals is out, so we don't care about them until we find out where they belong.
I mean, I would say, well, yes, if the 650% increase is, we're kind of on three.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm a penny pincher in
Your budget, you know, is a happy thing, so.
Okay. Sorry, Chris. It is the 650 that, the 650% I was like, what? But 360 is not a lot of money.
Then three things I want to note and I'll get exciting to even more exciting. So the least exciting is we've only approved the health contract, but as you know, they took that off of the tax levy for the village and then put it on to the county levy. So the taxpayers are still paying for it, it's just not through our funds anymore. So back in that first slide where I showed you that our tax levy, the amount we can collect from taxpayers went down by 1%, it's because of that little bit, that $1,600 some bucks we are no longer allowed to collect from our residents because it's now being collected from the county. Police and Sheriff's Department approved their contract tonight, it's remained stable 3,000. That seemed great, that seemed better. And then the best news is, if you remember, we approved a new fire dispatch contract technically in December and then again in spring. It'll now go into effect January 2022. Well, the reason we did that, the reason we negotiated is because it dropped our cost 19%, which is about $11,000, $12,000, which is pretty neat. So I just want to point that out, that is a pretty awesome savings. Otherwise, that number, that 57,000 number would have kept increasing by about 3%.
Our new services.
Safety.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Versus, we were using South Shore. That's awesome, considering how close they are.
South Shore did a great job. There was no service issues. It was purely, they're both great departments and with that savings, we
And they do that, we told them that and then they didn't even put it on for sale.
Yeah. No, that's great.
All right. Public Works, our garbage and recycling is pretty much the same. We approved that contract tonight as well. Bus station power is the same. Road maintenance, just a little buffer up there too for, you know, various little projects Road maintenance is just a little buffer up there too, for, you know, various sort of projects that might come up. Signs are pretty much the same, lights the same. So pretty much the same on public works. And there's definitely a clue that I should say, larger infrastructure projects, because as was noted by President Rossi, we should see huge savings from the road project itself. So those monies are separate than the budget, so that's why they're not counted for here. So if you guys decide, months from now, that, hey, we want to use these monies for A, B, and C, you can, it just doesn't affect our actual annual road maintenance budget. And then investments. So, I mean, I don't want to call this a slush fund, that's not the right word. It's a reserve fund. But really, at the end of the, at the end of the budget, and Laura and I talked about this a lot, we ended up having money left over, and I'll just be blunt, we did. So for now, I, we felt more comfortable putting it into our reserve account. Again, this is our rainy day fund. And there's a couple ideas that we toyed around, President Rossi knows too, that I'll bring to the board in the next few months, that we can maybe tap into those funds to use. But for now, I feel comfortable putting away savings, saving for a rainy day in case we need it. It's there, and we feel better about it.
If I may, that is amazing. I don't know if any of you remember, three, four years ago, we barely got to a balanced budget.
Right.
I mean, it was a struggle.
There was...
There was one year, it's 40,000 in the red.
Yeah, this is absolutely amazing.
So the, to touch on that, the first year I was here, when you hired me, I looked at your current budget. That was the budget that was, like, you guys literally approved it in the red. And that's why later on, you're gonna have a balanced budget policy, and they're like, what are we talking about? But that doesn't happen again. But anyway, yeah, I agree. I mean, it's crazy to think about how far we've come in the last four years, it's pretty awesome. Good stuff. So this is the breakdown on expenses, your largest expense, the debt obligations. And that's where you start, like, that's nothing new. Most municipalities' largest cost of debt. And then after that, it's payroll, or investments, public works, public safety, fun stuff like that. And then this is the cool chart that I show you guys every year, are your tax history. So I'll just pay more attention to maybe like the 19, 19, 20, 20, 20, 21. So point here, this is where the debt obligation for phase one of the road started. That's where it went up, your taxes went up from the 4.9 to 6.4. You did the reassessment this year, that's why the taxes were dropping. Down to 6, down to 6. And again, it's even with the new debt that we're talking about. And then, you know, complex debt is due to drop off between '25 and '26.
Right.
It'll significantly drop. And as we discussed, and I will continue to beat your heads, that when I'm not here, somebody does it, this is when I would argue you would do phase two of your road project, right? To capture that difference.
That's before the actual drop.
Correct. Yes, you would do your mining in '25.
Because you don't want people, they said, that they've dropped and then we raise.
Yeah, nobody would like that, you guys wouldn't like that as taxpayers either, so. That's it.
This is great, Chris.
So now I'll just end with, as Laura said, take a look at that budget book. There's a lot of good stuff in there. Every year, I've been adding more and more detail to the budget. And I follow GFLA standards, that's the Government Finance Officers Association standards. And it's really about telling a story, right? So your budget is more than just numbers, it's telling a story about where we are, how did we get there, and what are the policies that we live by. So please, take a look at that, you have between now and November to look through it. Schedule a meeting with me, ask questions, whoever you like. We'll send out a public notice that'll go out as well, and then we'll hold a public hearing and a final vote on the budget in November. And by the way, I think I've heard from most of you, November 18th will be our next meeting. So I wish you right there. So public postings, we'll go off of that. I can tell public, the budget book will be in my office. Public are welcome to come see it and ask questions as well. We encourage.
Okay.
Anything else?
Let's just, let's just also, have you tried that? I know when you push things out on the website, they, they go out to people, but I think that they go into a lot of people's spam. Have you tried what I tried? Where you send out an email versus sending it on the website?
I just don't know how to take that list and then convert it into a list, like a list from the site.
I do need 20 people at a time, if you want me to. My, my son, my kids', schedules are getting a lot less crazy. And I think it would be good to send out an email just to let people know, because everybody responded to the rummage sale. And it's good if you know that November 18th. Chris, if you drafted an email, I could certainly send it out.
Yeah.
New business, next item, approval for the 2022 complex window and door replacement project design and architectural administration.
We have... Even on old business?
Oh, excuse me, I was too excited to write new business A.
I know.
Old business A, approval of 2021 municipal bonding with Tri-City National Bank Taylor Complex Capital Projects.
So this should be known to everybody. We've been in talks with Tri-City Bank for borrowing the 300,000 over a 10-year time period, mainly for the windows project. You should have had the actual promissory note in your packet, the amortization schedule, which you guys have seen. And then an illustration from others on what to do with your taxes. You also have to solve what to do with your taxes. So we're just looking for approval, so you can get back executing, and we'll have monies come January 2022.
I approved the 2021 municipal bonding with Tri-City National Bank for Taylor Complex Capital Project.
You have to move.
I have to move to approve?
Yes.
The municipal bonding with Tri-City National Bank for Taylor Complex Capital Projects.
All right, we have a motion, a first and a second. First by trustee Gasser, second by trustee Black. Any discussion? Arud, oh, I'm sorry, threw me off. Second by trustee Arud. Any discussion? All right. Is this a roll call?
That's all we needed.
All right, and then we'll just do the standard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass. All right then, now, new business A. Approval for the 2022 complex window and door replacement project design and architectural administration. Do we have that? Is it in everyone else's packet?
Yeah, she would have said one.
I didn't print it all up.
I didn't either.
Well, so, what, what we did then is to start this off, and we're going to look to design things first, and then everyone's bidding to the same documents. So the window replacement would be then completely designed. And when we say completely, there'll be standards for each window or situation. So maybe five windows that have the same situation, and then there are other details for that. Doors, we threw into that as well. We're gonna have them do this for all the buildings, but we're gonna fit it out unitarily, so one building, two building. We'll see how far we can go. Also, we asked them to put together a price for a template for heating, the furnace replacements and AC replacements, every time going forward, when we want to replace a furnace and AC, we have that, we give it to the bidders, we're gonna get the same thing every time.
This, this, this.
Exactly. So we went to CUNY Architects, who has quite a bit of municipal architectural experience. They're based out of Pleasant Prairie, right by the Elmo, actually. I've worked with them before. They, again, I'm aware of their vast municipal experience. They've actually built the Kenosha County Building, just one of theirs. I feel they are one of the most economical architects for this type of work. I could get budgets for comparable work in this, and we're getting close to double from other architects. So this is one that I do feel is more of a sole proprietor in terms of the service offered. I really think we're gonna get a lot of value with CUNY Architects on this one. So Chris and I sat down with John Schmidtbauer. We gave him the rundown of what we believe, best believe the scope was. Oh, Kurt was there, so I'll excuse him, we were talking that. Some of the items that they talked about during the deliverables and the scope of work. So they'll give us drawings, not exactly similar to what the road project was, but at the end of it, we'll get bidding documents, they'll also handle the bidding process. So when we do this, they'll actually receive the bids, the bid opening at their office or here, whichever we prefer. It makes things very formal, that's the way you want to do it. It then lets the bidders know that we're having an honest process, everything is open right on the spot. There's no tampering or anything along those lines. Not to say anyone here would, but it makes it very straightforward. Are there any questions on CUNY Architects, that process, timeline? This would be something that would get designed over the winter, and then we'd put it up to bid late winter, very, very early spring. The idea being to get this novel, people are looking to plan for next year, and then get it started early spring.
It sounds to me that this, these architectural firm would pretty much take care of everything. It's kind of like an overseer of the whole project to make sure everything is done.
There's, there's construction administration, so that... Don't believe they have it in here. Oh, no, they have, this is, this is full administration, this isn't making a price. So when, basically, as president, then, I've kind of fulfilled like our, our construction manager role on this. So as we're getting questions from the bidders, during the bidding process, during the actual construction process, they call us to request for information or anything along those lines.
They handle it.
Yes, we send it to the architect to get a response out. They're with us throughout the entire project. Then they do a final walkthrough, generate punch lists if anything needs to be corrected. Yeah, they're, they're with us the entire project.
And you feel that that's a pretty, a pretty good price that they're suggesting?
This is amazing. This is an amazing price.
Would there ever be any, like, structural changes we would make to any of the buildings?
Not, no, not at this point. The, the structure of the buildings, where that's the last thing we'd ever touch on them. You'd really only go to do something like that if there were deficiency damages, something along those lines. We're really looking at envelope systems right now. The mechanical systems came up because we're doing that anyway. And it would be nice to have that document that is, hey, you know, let's use these going forward, or at least this, this is what we're shooting for, whatever manufacturer can fit the bill. But yeah, going, protecting from the outside end, so we know, and the thought process is that if you can't protect what's inside the building, I mean, you've got many problems there along, so. Roof, windows.
Okay.
Brick, things like that. Make sure those are in perfect order before you start going back to the inside.
Okay.
Mechanical systems like the heat and AC, that's a gray area, because obviously we have to keep our tenants happy. And when a furnace fails in the middle of winter, it's a good thing. Or when an air conditioner failed in July, it's also not a good thing. So I think we're being very responsible in how we're approaching these buildings. We're finally putting money into them, and we see their return with attendance. And long, long term, I mean, once we do things like this, we can look at slowly increasing rents, if it's reasonable.
Right.
I'm not trying to gouge anyone, but...
No, I just wondered, when I think about updates to buildings, if they're at the beginning, but I think we pay off those buildings before we update them.
Coming quick.
And these windows will really improve utility costs too.
I think so.
The village and the renters.
Just when those doors pay out.
Not really, I really don't.
All right then.
No, I want a full window right there, it's the kitchen.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 complex window and door replacement project design and architectural administration through the firm named... Sorry. CUNY?
Architects.
Architects, oh, I'll see.
For the amount of?
For the amount of, or to not exceed?
I just do the amount of on this one.
For the amount of 7,400.
We have a motion, is there a second? First by trustee Hinkle, second by trustee Black. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass. All right. Next item, approval of the 2022-26 waste pickup contract with John's disposal.
So we are renewing our contract at John's disposal. If you remember, the plan was to go out for bid come next year. When their contract was up, they approached us ahead of that deadline and said, hey, we'll cut you a deal, we'll keep the rates the same if you agree to stay with us. And we said, sure thing. That's it.
Everybody says.
Didn't that happen a couple of years ago, too?
Something like that.
Something similar.
Any discussion?
You know, I thought, was looking at this, I thought it was kind of interesting, items that cannot be collected and items that can be collected. And I thought you couldn't put up, like, drain oil and automotive batteries and earth rocks and that kind of stuff. But that goes out on bulk pickup. You know, if you can do that, because people, it says here, you know, you can't put earth, rocks, concrete, used construction, demolition materials, trees or parks, they're up. But then you look at it, and it's just like, they'll pick that up on bulk pickup. So I don't know if anybody calls you and says, hey, even like, it says here a refrigerator. And a lot of people, they think, oh, the CFCs and all that kind of stuff, you can't put that out there. They will pick it up. So it's just kind of interesting, if anybody contacts you, you might want to just look at something to see if it is covered or not.
This would be a great thing also, Chris, to add to Facebook at the beginning of the year, like, here's your schedule of when bulk pickup is, and here's information about bulk pickup.
It's a good idea, because I do get questions about that.
I always have questions, and it just reminds me of mine.
They do send us an annual calendar, so I think that's a good time to share info.
And then when I meet people, I think Patricia too, I always, I always print off a calendar and explain to them what, you know, the third Monday bulk pickup is. But I wasn't aware of some of these things that they're, you're able to put out there, so.
And they only even changed your garbage cans? If you don't have, like, we wanted a bigger recycle bin?
Yes.
And a smaller trash can, and they switched them for us.
Yes. I know neighbors that got smaller, both of them. And I thought, hmm, it's kind of nice.
You're also organized, they just put everything out there, it's what they built. So, way to go. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the curbside collection of solid waste and recyclables between John's disposal and the village of Elmwood Park for a five-year term, starting January 1st of 2022.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
First by trustee Ruth, second by trustee Gasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass. I think it better, I'm gonna get a discussion, I just forget that. The next item then, approval of the 2022 Racine County Sheriff's Department contract.
This one's, this one's even easier. The Racine Sheriff's Department charges you whopping $3,000 for everything they do. Please approve this.
They do a fantastic job, because it's a little bit of a money here.
Yeah, that's cheap.
That's amazing.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract with the Racine County Sheriff's Office and the village of Elmwood Park for the year 2022, as noted. I will second.
First by trustee Ruth, second by trustee Gasser. Any discussion? All right then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass.
And Chris, that's another, um, Facebook post would be great to remind your neighbors that if they see any suspicious activity, call them.
I got that note already.
The non-emergency line, because I do think that that is really important. And I feel like not enough people do that. That's all.
So then after this, you two get together.
We're gonna write down all the...
All Facebook posts.
We're gonna plan the whole Facebook calendar here.
I'll add it to my goals for 2020.
Ellie, oh, we got, got you on your toes.
All right. Next item, Resolution 2021-13, the Resolution amending section 2.031 on hired staff salaries and 2.074 on village officer salaries.
All right. So there's two pieces to this. We're talking about our hired staff, which cases our maintenance crew supervisor, and then the board officers are the board of trustee positions. So how we got going down this path is I talked to President Rossi and our finance chair, Laura, about hiring a new individual for next year. And we came to the conclusion that at the current rate of $12 an hour, there's no way we would hire somebody who is competent and skilled enough, even if they were retired and even out of goodness of their hearts. So it really felt like time to, to update this. So this first part would update the bi-weekly salary of a maintenance crew person of $16 an hour and maintenance supervisor to $18 an hour. I feel comfortable doing it this year because our income stream is just so nice, that even if, let's say, a building didn't get rented out, we still have enough in the buffer that we can make sure we pay our employees. And as I said earlier, hire a new staff member to create a succession plan, and then hopefully get some of these retired guys actually into retirement, like I'm sure they want. So that's that piece. So the second piece is that, a couple of years ago, when I first got hired here, I talked with your past president about board of trustee and village president salaries. Not because anybody here was greedy, but because based on the norm, and you got to track this with the leading municipalities, there is an average salary that a board of trustee person would have based on their population. We talked about that, I remember a couple of years ago reaching out to the director of the leading Wisconsin municipalities, and I had asked about, well, is there any standards? And he's like, well, actually, state law, it says we have such and such a salary. I forget what it was, but you guys weren't high enough. And, but, but there also wasn't either, A, an appetite on the board to increase the salaries of board, and two, you guys weren't in the fiscal place to do so, you were running negative at the time. So what this does is it updates the village president's salary. Right now, the president gets paid 4,000, we would update it to 6,000, and village trustees to 2,000 from 1,000. You guys currently get paid on a quarterly basis, so if you do the math, it would break it down to 500 per quarter for trustees, and what is that, 1,500 for village president. But the key with all this, and Laura had asked me a good question, was it's a conflict of interest that we're increasing our own salaries. You're not increasing your own salaries. These don't go into effect, and they cannot by law go into effect until a new person is elected to your seat. So you'll see that here, that, for example, village president, that doesn't go into effect until 2023. So whether it's early or not, whoever is the new duly elected village president in April of 2023, that's the person who's entitled to this new salary. And same thing for the trustees, and you saw in my budget, that I only incorporated three trustee increases for next year, because only three of you will be getting reelected in April, and that's when you're entitled to that, 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 that cost. So again, again, it's up to you guys, it's the political appetite of the board. Laura and I, you know, talked pretty length about this, and, you know, there's hope that by increasing the salaries, maybe you get a little bit higher quality of trustees, right? Maybe higher participation. You don't know, but you hope.
Oh, you're right now, that's true.
Yeah, quality is actually... But, but really, but really...
Right there was bullying.
Yeah, honestly, I could, I could say that, because it's a public document, so trustee Barrios, for those who don't know, he's not choosing to run next year. So, when you think about that, we have to recruit at least one person.
Can I run in his place, so I can...
I wonder if he could resign.
Well, you can resign.
Just asking.
So...
I am a teacher, so, you know.
So, my point being is that, you know, when you think about recruitment and the time that you guys put in, I mean, some of you guys do, I'm sorry, all of you guys do a lot of work, right? And you should be compensated for that, I think.
Hard to, no joke.
So, this reflects that. If you have any questions you can ask me, but I would be, I would recommend...
All right.
Is this kinda really, I mean, I'm thinking about the money part here, and hopefully, right now, we're in a good position, okay? We're doing okay. But if something happens, and we like, oh my gosh, fall on our butts, and something terrible happens, would that like really come back and bite us?
It's such a nominal...
It's so small, I don't know. So, they go into effect when a new individual is...
No, if you, if you get reelected...
So, if I'm reelected, then it goes into effect.
Yes.
But like for yourself, you were, you were just elected, so it just wanna go into effect for you if, if, until you won in 2024.
Correct.
Again, we're, we're... That's why Ellie's...
No, not really.
Ellie's gonna run for Lucy.
I'm gonna run for Lucy.
Her election slogan is gonna be because I...
Because I'm a teacher, right?
I got signed, I got signed on this season.
$1,000.
In all seriousness, we should keep moving, we do...
I don't, I, I don't, I, I don't have any questions or suggestions.
Yes, there's no questions, and let's put a motion out. Anybody?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 20... 21-13, a resolution amending section 2.03 on hired staff, and 2.074 on village officer salaries.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? First by trustee Hinkle, second by trustee Black. This one feels like it should be a roll call, so we're gonna do a roll call, all right? Trustee Gasser.
Aye.
Ruth?
For hired staff, I'm gonna abstain, and then for the general regulation governing of all village officers, I, aye.
Myself then, aye?
Aye.
Hinkle, aye.
All right. And then so passed, noting the one abstain, partial abstain.
It's either yes or no.
Well, I knew abstain.
You have to abstain.
Yeah.
Oh, abstain.
I didn't think about that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay? All right then, next item, Resolution 20, 21-14, a resolution establishing municipal wards based on the 2020 census for the village of Elmwood Park.
All right. Every 10 years, there is a US census. From that, the counties create municipal maps and ward boundaries. So, I mean, if you're in a larger city, and you had different automatic districts, right? You would determine the changing dynamics of that, so if there's equal population. Luckily, the village of Elmwood Park, we're not that big, so if you look at that map that I sent you guys, nothing has changed. The only change that we'll see, maybe not from a village standpoint, from at a county level, your county district has changed shape a little bit, so just watch for that in spring. As far as the village is concerned, nothing's changed, and we just need to prove this procedure.
How would it affect us in the spring if something was different? I mean, is that something we really don't have to worry about?
I mean, you might have a different supervisor, depending on how it's cut.
Oh, yeah.
They could have, I don't know where Rusty went, but they could have cut him out, or created a challenger for him, depending on what they did. But that's a, can I figure?
Well, you have to still be around at that time, so you can look into that. You check it out.
All right, any questions? If not, a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14, a resolution establishing municipal wards based on the 2020 US census for the village of Elmwood Park.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
First by trustee Ruth, second by trustee Hinkle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass. Next item, Resolution 2021-15, a resolution amending section 14.041 on preparation and adoption of annual budget and adding 14.046 on balance budget requirement, debt policy, and reserve policy. Chris mentioned a little bit about Mr. Roger Thies.
Yeah. So, one of the last chapters of your ordinance is talk about development of the budget. So, we added a few things in here. First, I mean, I love to give President Rossi credit where credit's due, but creating the budget is not one of them. So, updating the ordinance just to reflect that, as of right now, your administrator or perpetrator, whichever it might be, is the one who's crafting that budget, and then he does it with the advice of the village president and village finance chair. So, that's what that first correction is. And then we added six. And so, what this does is it really creates a safety net for a future board. We can all say that, you know, we have great intentions, and we're smart people, and we know what we're doing with fiscal policy and all that stuff. We're like, we're here forever. And so, by codifying this, you're creating some safety nets for a future board. So, there's three things here. First is a balanced budget requirement. So, this says the village of Elmwood Park shall prove an annual budget where total expenditures equal total revenues, and only uses fund balance for non-to-expenses. So, this is binding the future board, you have to have a balanced budget. Period.
I thought we did it already.
Nope.
Okay.
And you do do it annually, but there's no ordinance that's...
Okay, all right.
So, as of right now, we could pass a non-balanced budget.
Okay.
And that would fly.
Okay.
Okay? It does, you know, create a little safety here that, you know, if for an emergency, right, we can use the fund balance if we need to, but ideally, we're gonna have a balanced budget. The second point is debt policy. So, the village of Elmwood Park shall hold a debt obligation of no more than 20% of the annual assessed value of the village. So, when Elders was here last year, they talked about this, that a village can't, or any municipality can't have, hold more debt than 20% of their assessed value. Just so you know, 20% of the assessed value of the village of Elmwood Park is like $9 million, and you guys only have like $1 million in debt, maybe? So, you're not anywhere close to that, but again, you're creating a baby safety net so that a future board doesn't take themselves into too much debt. And then finally, a reserve policy that says the village of Elmwood Park shall hold and maintain its reserves at a minimum of 17% of the total annual operating budget for the current year. Again, you're at about 24% right now. So, it's saying that minimum in reserves in our savings, we need to have 17% of the total operating budget. So, that would weigh to maybe $100,000. Right now, we actually are at about $100,000 at the end of the year. Assuming that we end the year positive, we'll have $30,000 that'll roll in there, and then as you saw on the budget, we have another $50,000 that'll go on top of it, too. So, again, balanced budget requirement, debt policy, and reserve policy are placed to be checked today.
One quick question, reserve, does that reset every year? Like, for example, so let's say we have $100,000, whatever 17% is, and we use something with something, do we have to replenish it back for the next year?
You don't have to, but I guess if you went under that 17%, then this policy would state that in your budget, like we did this year, you should be paying yourselves back. But again, we can't bind a future board, they could see this policy and then just ignore it, but we're just...
And where do the 17% from?
That's a GFoa standard, so that's the government financing offices.
Fair enough.
And if anybody's curious about this stuff, in that budget book that I gave you guys, there's actually a detailed section about each of these things, and it shows the history of where we are, where we've been, so it's pretty cool, so if you wanna look into it. Like, you can see in your reserves, you used to have like $400,000, then you bought the complex, then it went really far down, then we've been building back up over the years.
Cool.
If you're monitoring, there's...
All right, there's no more discussion. I'll ask again for it anyway, so. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-15, which is amending section 14.041 on preparation and adoption of annual budget and adding 14.046 on balanced budget requirement, debt policy, and reserve policy.
Okay. A motion, and first by Hinkle, second by Ruth. All in favor? Is there any discussion? Excuse me, I've gotta, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass. Next item, G motion to...
To the council.
Oh, you, thank you. Before, so we'll dismiss overall adjournment from closed session, so we're gonna switch over to the approval of accounts payable. So, first, everyone's had a chance, I hope, to review accounts payable.
I did not sign, nope, I didn't sign. Where is going? I was right there, because I was right on mine.
Yes.
All right then, now that everyone has signed, or at least had a chance to review. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable as presented to the board of trustees.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
First by Ruth, second by Gasser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so pass. Next, item G, motion, well, a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985G, which is conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, which is the building by default. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to go to a closed session.
All right. Pursuant to, just discuss. Trustee, first, we have a motion, but trustee opposed, is there a second?
Second.